Breehan, we're ready here in chambers.
All right. Good morning, everybody. Welcome to Spokane City Council's study session for today. We have two agenda items. One is getting our annual preview of the update to the six-year capital plan regarding streets. And then we have some materials from the City Council American Recovery Plan Act work group with six proposals for council to discuss and consider advancing towards the RFP process. So with that, we'll start with Kevin Paco. Kevin, thanks for coming back to us as you do every year, and I'll give it over to you.
Great, thank you. My screen should be up now. So yes, good morning, everyone. Thank you for the time and opportunity to present to you today. My name is Kevin Paco. I'm the Senior Engineer at Integrated Capital Management Department. Catherine Miller may be joining us as well. She's she's our Director and ICM. First, today, this is really intended as kind of a bigger picture overview of our six-year streets capital program. And there'll be other touch points we'll be having with you, and I'll kind of touch on those here as well through various PIES meetings. And in a second study session, we'll dive a little bit deeper into details. And my hope today is make this more big-picture informational, give the overview of kind of what the street program is and what the components are and kind of how it comes together. So again, I'll touch on some of those overview issues, and then I'll dive a little bit deeper into each of the individual sections that exist within our six-year streets capital program. And then our intent, we do have a second study session scheduled with February 10th as well. We'll take a little bit deeper dive into some of these topics listed here as well, as well as any follow-up if there are questions that come up today that need to look into, we can follow up on those as part of that second study session. So first, kind of getting into the overview, you know, what is the six-year program? What is its role? It's really our tool to implement the comp plan and specifically the chapter four transportation section of our comprehensive plan. We, once projects come into the program, we look for funding for those particular projects. And over the course of those six years, the intent is to move into design and ultimately to construction. Now, one of the reasons we're coming to, we always come to so early in the year, because I'm kicking off our 2023 through 2028 six-year cycle, one of the reasons we do that is we're required by state law to have an adopted program approved by the city council by July 1st of each year, even though it really doesn't take an effect until next January. So we have to, we have to get moving on it early in the year each year. And then we have, of course, numerous public touch points along the way and actual work in the program itself. So each year, those updates include new projects coming into the program, completed projects where construction is is complete or nearly complete coming out, as well as updates to content, schedule, and budget on and projects that are already in the program. Another sort of big picture slide here is, you know, what's our strategy? What's our approach? What are the things we keep in mind? In terms of our integrated streets, there's really multiple strategies here. We got the maintenance side. So that's the mantra that we kind of use is keep the good streets good and manage the poor streets. And that's all the work done by our, our street department, our arterial street grining overlays they do each year, our residential maintenance programs. And then on our capital side, the real large projects are those rebuild projects. And they're prioritized and included in our program through a process we refer to as the reconstruction matrix. And again, I'll touch on that a little bit later, and even more so in the, in the second study session. And then in terms of that, that strategy and that focus is really a commitment to improve the overall street system, but of course, a focus on the arterial side, considering that more than 90% of our vehicle miles traveled occur on those arterial roadways. Over the course of a 20-year timeframe, we want to address all arterials, whether it's a need for a full rebuild or maintenance. On the specifics of the projects, you know, we're looking wherever we can to consider multimodal considerations, complete street improvements. And then we're looking to integrate our projects with our utility work and get much more bang for our buck. If there's a near-term need for utility improvements, to do those collaborative integrated projects. So there's some cost sharing there and long-term, just the most cost-effective way to deliver our capital projects. Then on the residential side of things, there's a past commitment to increase our investments in residential street maintenance. And that primarily was able to occur through the establishment of the transportation benefit district funding that primarily goes for that residential street maintenance. And then in terms of dollars, this is just a kind of a general idea, kind of want to share and have people keep in the back of their mind, sort of the relative costs of projects. On the, on the, the two left-hand columns here are sort of our capital, large capital projects. So what this is meant to convey is those most expensive projects are those capital rebuild projects in our downtown core or more older areas of town. They just tend to be more expensive, more complicated issues to deal with, old utilities we have to worry about and consider. A little bit cheaper is when we get to sort the rebuild projects and maybe aren't in those urban cores. That's why I say for, for one, for every buck that we can, where we're applying to a capital rebuild downtown, in terms of limits of work or how much work we can accomplish, almost twice as much outside. And then when we go to our maintenance areas, you know, we get even more bang for the buck in terms of the amount of work that we can complete with our grinding overlays. And then our least expensive projects are those, those preservation projects through chip seal. Primarily chip seal, there's other seal coat type projects that we can do, but primarily through that chip seal. And the intent of those, of course, is to extend the life and, and maintain a decent pavement condition on those roadways. And in terms of the funding sources, you know, where does our money come from, particularly for our capital projects? And there's several buckets. Everything is not necessarily listed here, but I've kind of, kind of listed kind of highlights, if you will. First of all, our local dollars, we have our, our city's street levy. We have some money that comes in from REIT, REIT goes to a variety of sources, but some of that comes into our arterial street fund. And then the city utilities contribute dollars to their arterial street maintenance and arterial street fund as well. In terms of the outside funding, we have multiple grant sources, both from the federal and state level. And in particular, our larger scale projects are primarily funded through federal and state grants. And then we have a, I kind of divided up a local, another local section here that are more specific type programs that are earmarked, if you will, for, for specific types of improvements. You have our impact fee programs. So there's a specific list and type of projects that are funded through our traffic impact fees. And then you're well aware of our council-led traffic calming and school safety programs. And then there's also some sidewalk work that gets funded through the TBD program as well. And then we have sort of some one-off and more limited sources. Sometimes there's funding that comes in through our PDAs and we collaborate on projects, as the case for the recent East Spring project, for instance. There's some collaborative projects we do with STA, where they're contributing some funding to projects. And then occasionally on some really large projects, some of our major bridge replacement projects we've done in the past, we've looked to, to loans as needed. So I think I'll pause there real quick before I get into kind of the meat of what's in the program, what are the sections. I'll pause there real quick to see if there's any initial questions. Feel free to speak up.
Questions, just speak up.
Okay, hearing none. And I will definitely hope to have some, you know, some open dialogue and Q and A at the end as well. But if you have a burning question as I'm going through some of this, don't hesitate to interrupt. So I've listed here the, the five primary sections that are included or categories that are included in our, in our six-year streets program, bridge, our major street capital, which is rebuilds, the largest section in terms of where our dollars go, pedestrian and bike, our neighborhood programs, and then our impact fee program. Just want to point out that the street maintenance side is not included in the six-year capital program. It falls outside of the six-year program. And that's our arterial and residential street maintenance programs, our grinding overlays, chip seals, crack seals, those types of projects. So first, our, our bridge, our bridge category, this tends to be the section with the, with the fewest number of projects, just because they are very costly projects. They're almost entirely driven by our ability to obtain funding, funding specific for bridge rebuild, rehabilitation projects, which is mainly what we're focused on. It's highly competitive. It's an area that's getting a lot of discussion, you know, state and nationally, as an area of importance, where the amount of funding available out there is, falls below what the demand really is. So it tends to be, those grant programs tend to be highly competitive, and it's really challenging to get funding. The two existing projects we have in the program, that one of them is under construction, you're probably well, well aware of, there's a post-street bridge, very large, costly project, 15 to 20 million dollars total. And then a smaller one, Hatch Road Bridge, which is a deck replacement that's going on. That's grant-funded as well. That project will go to start construction here in the spring. Those are the only two projects in the program right now. I will be adding a couple during this, this update this year as a result of a couple of grant awards for some deck rehabilitation and maintenance work on both Maple Street Bridge, as well as the Washington Stevens Bridges for Park. And then, again, our largest section within our program in terms of both projects and dollar value is our, what we just refer to as our street capital. These are really our rebuild or reconstruction projects. You see a list of information there that's, that's important to understand. They, they apply to our arterials only. In terms of how those projects come into our program, we rely primarily on what we refer to as the reconstruction matrix. This applies to those full rebuilds. It's a scoring process that was developed in collaboration between staff and the Planning Commission Transportation Subcommittee. That work was done back in 2015 and 2016 as part of the update to the transportation component of the comprehensive plan. It was first put into place as part of the 2017 update to the six-year program. A lot of groups were involved. It wasn't just the PCTS. There was, you know, feedback from the public in general and other advisory boards in developing that methodology. And ultimately, that, that methodology was accepted and adopted by the city council, you know, for our use and application in our six-year program. We've had various presentations recently on it, the last couple of years. Went, went into it, went to a deep dive on it last year. And I intend to do the same as part of the, that second study session. That'll be one of the main focuses, is to kind of go a little bit deeper into that program. But just as an early overview, if you will, sort of what goes into that scoring matrix and what, what considerations are included. They ultimately all tie back to the goals and policies within our comprehensive plan. And I won't, I won't elaborate on each individual item here. You can see them. There's six major categories where, or projects or segments of roadway are scored and ranked. And that ultimately leads to a prioritized list that influences the projects that are in our, in our current program and which ones are falling just outside. And then the next section, pedestrian and bike, this is a, probably our, our second largest section in terms of the number of projects that we deliver and construct. There are, we're pointing out that there is a lot of pedestrian and bike work that gets done in projects that aren't necessarily defined as a bike ped project. So with our full rebuild projects, for instance, we're doing complete street improvements. So this isn't the only area where biking and pedestrian improvements get constructed, but this section is more for those truly standalone projects. The two, two major types that I would, I would categorize are more of our regional trail. So our Centennial Trail Summit Gap Project that just wrapped up here this fall. It's an example of one of the projects that's in this section of our program. And then a lot of our pedestrian safety and crossing type projects, the larger scale ones that have, for instance, the hybrid beacons or otherwise known as the HOX signals, the RFB, the rapid flashing beacons, and our safe routes to school, major sidewalk projects, those types of projects also fall within this program. In terms of how, how do those projects come into the program that really influenced by, you know, a number of different plans, the bike plan, pedestrian plan from the comp plan, specific neighborhood plans. And then many of them originate from kind of emerging in, in recent issues based on bike and ped safety and data. They're very much data-driven. A lot of these projects, I mentioned HOX signals and RFBs and safe route to school type projects, they're driven by our ability to create, receive grant dollars, and those are all competitive programs. And, and the selection of projects under those programs are very much data-driven based on current data, traffic volumes, bike and ped safety, bike and ped activity, accident data, for instance. So they're very much a data-driven projects. And I've got a couple of examples that I can cite for you here as well in a second. And then there are smaller bike and ped related projects. You're, you're familiar with the traffic calming and school safety type projects. Those tend to be smaller spot projects, if you will, spread, spread around the city. But those occur generally through other programs within our capital program. So one example of how a sort of project arrives or lands in our, in our capital program here for that bike and pedestrian category. So this is an example of a project that was added to the program last year. It's one of those grant-funded projects. And just kind of showing you the chronology of events. We always come to council when we're planning to apply for a particular grant. So for this particular project, we had a, we had a grant program called HCS, the Highway Safety Improvement Program, back in 2020, presented to council on the projects and locations we were intending to submit applications on. Grant application actually occurred in March of 2020. We got notification of a grant award for one of those projects, which is Division Street Hybrid Beacon that occurred in December of 2020. So about this time last year, we, it was, was one of the projects that we were adding to our program, that particular project. Again, Division Street HOX signals essentially, located three locations at Longfellow Everett and Rhodes Wheel to the north. So that project's in our program. It's in design as we speak and planned for construction in 2023. So this is a, you know, a classic example of how some of those bike and pedestrian projects enter our program. And we do have a lengthy list of additions this year from some safe routes to school and ped bike safety grant awards that we received in this last year.
Kevin, if I don't want to, I interrupt real quick on that last slide. Catherine Miller, Director of Integrated Capital Management for, for the new council members. Kevin also pointed out a classic example of how long it takes to get a project from the application stage to a construction in the ground stage. And this is, this is very typical, that we typically have cycles of funding, different types of money that come through this area from our funding agencies like SRTC that take cyclical times to come through in terms of many years between them giving us the application opportunity and then when we actually can utilize the dollars. And in fact, Kevin will be coming to the PIES meeting this Monday with a new opportunity for some grants. And it'll follow the same exact process. It'll be many years before we actually, if we are successful in this competitive arena, it'll take several years before we actually see it in the ground. And from I suspect a council member's perspective, with the four-year cycle that you have, you're really looking at opportunities that aren't always going to be there in terms of that cyclical piece. So you're coming in to an arena that four years ago, three years ago, sometimes longer, depending on how large the project is and how much money we need to find from those grant opportunities. We've got examples of taking 10 years from start to finish in terms of the process. So it really is a longer process than, than we all expect and would like. But when we are relying on grants and federal and state opportunities, this is just the world we're in.
Great. Thank you, Catherine. Next section is our, is what we refer to as our neighbor, neighborhood section. These are really more programmatic driven areas. So for instance, in school safety and traffic calming, we don't list every, every incremental small project that occurs under the traffic calming. They're done as a pro, as an overall program. The council, you know, has their process for selecting and prioritizing which projects will occur. And then we deliver those projects through design and construction as a, as an annual package of multiple improvements throughout the year. Like those annual programs, we probably have anywhere from, you know, 10 or 12 on the low end to 20 different project locations, whether, or those smaller improvements are getting implemented. And we have our unpaved streets program. That's a newer program created by city council a couple of years ago. I think we're in our second or third year of that program that paves unpaved streets roughly, roughly two blocks per council district per year. And then we have a TBD sidewalk program. So there's a small amount or percentage of the transportation benefit district funds that are earmarked for sidewalk projects. We tend to use those dollars and to, to pursue grant dollars, use that money to leverage and use it as local match in our pursuit of grant dollars. Helps us score better and is, is a good way to, to stretch those dollars and get, get more improvements for that available funding. And the final section is the impact fee section. You know, it's very specific. I don't expect you to be able to read all the projects in here. We could provide the list if, if folks are interested, and I believe it's available online. But there's a specific set of projects that are included in the impact fee program. And the different impact fees by the five different districts throughout town are calculated based on those projects in the program. They're generally intersection capacity increasing type projects. You know, it's governed by our impact fee ordinance. That, that list of projects in the overall program receives some periodic updates. And again, those are, are generally a capacity improving type projects. Just as an example, one that's under construction as we speak is the Maple Wellesley Intersection Improvement Project. We did receive a grant for that, but the impact fee funds are being used as our, essentially our local matching dollars on that project. So that's a very common or typical type of project that we will, we would build through the impact fee program. So then pitting sort of away from the program, going back to that, that street maintenance category, recognizing this is other street work that gets accomplished or constructed outside of our capital program. Really two main buckets. You've got the arterial side. Those grinding overlays are traditionally constructed by our street department crews. Roughly $5 million of work per year. That includes ADA ramp work, we're required by federal law to bring any ADA ramps up to current standards within a, within the limits of work of the grinding overlays. We also accomplish some chip seal work and crack seal work underneath that program. That program is, is really developed and locations are prioritized by our street department staff through their asset management work and the pavement condition analysis that they do. And they have, they have a scoring matrix they use as well for prioritizing the various arterial projects within their program. And then likewise, on the residential side, over $4 million of work annually, funding from both the transportation benefit district and some general street maintenance dollars. Similar type of work as arterials. It's a mix of grinding overlays with ADA ramps, chip seals and crack seals. And then on that residential side, especially the Citizens Advisory Board is, is involved with street staff in reviewing and selecting and prioritizing that residential work. And then finally, it's the topic I want to touch upon more in the, the, the second study session. But this is just this concept of roadways of significance. It, it isn't part of our, our process or our program at the moment, but it's something that's been talked about in the past, several years ago, came up again last year. So we're revisiting the topic. We've had several discussions with the Plan Commission Transportation Subcommittee, and we have another upcoming meeting with them next week to kind of discuss this area further. What, what this, what roadways of significance is, was a, was an idea about how, how do we have a process outside of our reconstruction matrix? And you heard me refer to the reconstruction matrix earlier. And that kind of controls those large rebuild projects that are in our program. We wanted to look at is, is there a need for an alternative way to bring in a very limited, select few projects that maybe don't score so well within the reconstruction matrix, but they're deemed important projects that we would like to emphasize and develop. The two general areas of types of projects that are sort of bubbling to the surface in terms of areas, areas of emphasis are economic development-driven type projects and, and, and then projects with a strong equity consideration. So that's the ongoing dialogue that's, that's occurring right now with PCTS. Again, this is not formally part of our, our capital process that's going on. But we'll have some more discussion about this in the, in the next study session. And then finally, next steps, just, there's lots of touch points in our annual update to our six-year street program. I've highlighted all the touch points that occur with the city council. But in between that is, you know, three presentations to PCTS, three to Plan Commission, as well as some more formal presentations. Last year, I presented to the Bicycle Advisory Board and the Community Assembly as well. So a lot of process, all ultimately leading to an update, excuse me, an adoption of the program by the city council in June. So that concludes my presentation for today, but I'm happy to take any questions. And we certainly, you know, look forward to dialogue and with city council.
Questions from council members? We can't see everyone, so just go ahead and.
This is Karen. Kevin, thank you for that presentation. Quick question. Have we ever thought about, and frankly, I can't remember. Quick question, have we ever thought about, and frankly, I can't remember, but have we ever taken kind of a condensed presentation like this out to the neighborhoods? And, and I don't know if it's something in the future. I just am trying to take some lessons that we learned on the Centennial Trail project and from the time that the grant, the grants were being applied for and accepted and then how we got information out to that neighborhood. But as I was listening to you, this is such great information, maybe at some point we could think about a condensed, just presentation so that neighborhoods understand the different programs and how the money is spent, what it should be applied to, that kind of thing, the different pots of money. That might be really beneficial as our neighborhoods get more populated and kind of more involved in process. So it, it's just a thought, but this is great information and I appreciate it.
Yeah, I'll let Catherine weigh in as well on this. I guess to that point, I will say, I mentioned I presented to the community assembly last year. It was, you know, more condensed and brief. And obviously there's a lot here to digest, so kind of to your point, it definitely needs to be appropriate for the audience in terms of, you know, boiled down to maybe a little bit shorter presentation, if you will. But I did do something for the community assembly last year. I believe there's been other touch points. I've only been in this position for a couple of years now and Catherine can maybe speak to maybe some of that in the.
Yeah, we, we focused on the community assembly for a couple of reasons. They're, they're the leadership of those neighborhoods and they, they should be in theory, the ones that would be spending the most time to get educated. So we certainly wanted to hit those folks that we would assume would be the most interested. And that's also balanced with, you know, we found that people necessarily in general aren't excited about the funding conversation. It's, it's kind of drab and boring for, for, for some. And until those trucks show up in neighborhoods, we don't get a lot of traction on, on the topic. So we really wanted to get to the folks like, like officials like yourselves that, that definitely have an interest in, in understanding and getting that different level of, of education on, on the topic. And we talked about levy and that's a term, but what, what that really was, and I apologize for being a little bit late, but that was a voted on funding stream by the community that, that passed by a really significant margin. And, and the narrative that we, we shared with the community at the time was good roads on average in 20 years is what we were going to use their money for. And the underlying basis for everything that Kevin mentioned is, is really drawing back to that original vote that had such a significant percentage of support by our community that it, it really is built on maintenance. We, we can't build our way in the next 20 years. We can't afford to rebuild every road. And, and as you saw in the, the other slides, the, the amount of money we spend on a full rebuild is so much more than if we just take care of what we have. And that's why the significant focus on maintenance is because that's how we're going to deliver an average of good roads, good roads out there with the community. So you've got our opportunity to capital monies on occasion to get re, grind projects, grind and overlay projects, which are typically, you know, obviously the bread and butter, the, the day-to-day operations of our street department in terms of that $5 million a year that are, that are trying to chip away at the, just the, the maintenance log as we go through. But delivering that, that message is, is a tough one in, in terms of, you know, where, where to get our best bang for our buck in terms of really understanding. And, and I, I understand, I mean, it's frustrating enough to know where projects come from and how, how it operates. And, and that's why I just want to emphasize with council members, just, just the time it takes and the, you know, the competitive nature of it. And, you know, if we, if we controlled the dollars because we created it in our own abilities, you know, we would have a different program completely. But, you know, a lot of, you know, general citizens just don't, don't realize how much we rely on that grant funding because even though we have those levy dollars and it is a significant amount, it still is not enough to, to, to do all the work. And that's why we use that levy dollar for match money to, to try to get more competitive in the grants we're, we're in. But we still are, are, you know, are needing those, those federal state grants to, to really impact especially those, those full rebuilds in terms of how, how much money those take. And as Kevin pointed out, the downtown is even more significant. And of course, that's our oldest stuff out there, right? And we get a lot of, a lot of community interacting in the downtown area. So it's got a lot of eyes on it, of course, as well anyhow. So just a lot of, lot going on and that's why we want to spend a little time with, with council. So we'd love any, any questions you have on, you know, where things come from, how, how we get to where we get. We obviously, as Kevin mentioned, come to council for every application we put out there. We typically have a lot of work in the background that's going on. So there, there isn't time to, to go out and talk and, you know, in terms of, of when those brands come in. And that's again, why we come to, to, to the leadership of council and have these conversations with, with you folks.
Other questions, comments? Um, I'll just respond a couple of things. So I think council member Stratton, that's a great idea. And because we did this topic at the start of our study session, I think our communications people could just send a link to the study session out to all the neighborhood council leaders and they would get it, especially since they're all meeting, well, not all of them, but mostly meeting virtually anyway. So I think Shawna is probably on the line and Lisa. So hopefully they could work on just sending out that link because as, as Catherine has explained, there's often a, a gap between people's understanding of how this program works and how it actually works. So I think that would be great. My second thing, I'm looking forward to the next presentation where I think we're going to get into the nominations for specific projects to join the plan and get the information of the projects that have come off because we've completed them. But I just want to remind you Kevin and, and your team, the council is, is interested in what the department is proposing, but also interested in those projects that were close to being put on the list, but weren't this time and the criteria so that we could weigh in early on whether we want to swap projects in or out. And so we're not doing it so late in the process that the plan commission can't review what council changes are before they do their congruency piece. So I just wanted to remind that, that we would like to see both what you all are recommending, which we almost always adopt, and then a few that are, are close by, you know, the last ones that didn't quite make it in.
So exactly, we'll, we'll be coming to council at the 10th, February 10th, study session and talking about all the projects that we did apply for, all the projects the council has already seen and weighed in on in terms of where, you know, we, we, I've actually had my team come back and report when we were selected. Again, that timeline of 2020 and then we don't see it in the program till 2023 or, you know, all those kind of things. Anyhow, so I was trying to get back to council in the step so you could kind of, kind of see some of that process unfolding a little bit. So I, I believe we came back when we, when we were selected to, to let council know. So what, what you're going to see going new into the program are, are the end result of all that process we've had with, with council on, on that regard. And when we talk about selection, the, the piece of selection is through the matrix in terms of that scoring process. And that's why obviously, council president, when you asked us to go back and, and look at the roadways of significance conversation and take a look at that process and see if there's any changes that are needed. And we're, we're still obviously working with the subcommittee there and to get that input and, and feedback from, from them. But with, with obviously the, the resources being limited, that's the intent of having a selection process, having a scoring process is because we can't in 20 years do all of the, the desired needs in, in one year, right? We don't have enough money to do that, but we have to have some kind of process to understand what goes first and, and what ends up kind of going towards the end. And that's what the matrix was intended to do. And, and Kevin, while mentioning that roadways of significance, it was really to recognize that there is no perfect process. We all know that. It doesn't matter how good our, 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 our system or process is. And that's why this, this concept of roadways of significance to pick outside the process and do it in a way that doesn't make the first process be defunct, that there isn't a, a use for it because we're just going to, kind of pick wherever we want to go in, in terms of that. And, and roadways of, of, excuse me, the matrix is about rebuilding, which are very large projects, which are very large costs, which take us time. So again, some of our larger projects have been, been 10 years. And so you either stop, you know, you, you, you select it and move forward. Our hardest part is to tell our funding agencies, we don't want your money, we changed our minds. That doesn't usually go well because then they, they start wondering, well, are you really going to do this or not? Maybe we'll pick another community that, that delivers on what they say they're going to do. So those are some of the concerns I have running this department that we, we obviously maintain really good relationships with our funding agencies since we are so reliant on them to, to deliver the dollars we need.
Yeah, no, that's great. And we look forward to the next meeting. So I think that's all for this.
I got it.
Oh.
Zach's got a quick, yeah, quick question. Thanks for the presentation. Still learning lots. I was just wondering how, just this week, the mayor came to us with a proposal for the grind and overlay project on those roads. I was wondering how that fits into this process.
That fits in from the standpoint of the TBD program, which is our monies that are generated from the license tabs. That program was focused in, well, the terms we use is residential streets, but the technical term is a local road versus an arterial. And on a local road, the focus of the TB program has been in the residential where people live, right? The homes. But there's also a lot of roads that are local that also are populated with commercial properties. So small businesses that are located not on a arterial, but on a local road. And what the mayor was, was, was looking at was kind of a, a missed area. It's technically part of the TBD in terms of local roads, but the focus certainly has been in the residential. And with all of the economic upheaval we've had, obviously, over the last couple of years, it was just trying to affect or to recognize, obviously, commercial areas, again, that aren't located on a, on a arterial. So that we had some surplus dollars that we couldn't get out in the way we want. Again, those, those, these two competitive grants, we, we don't always get them. And we, we had past conversations with, with council, just obviously, we don't want our dollars just sitting in a bank building up in that sense. And we were already intending to get those dollars out to, again, our biggest bang for our buck is, is those maintenance, those grind and overlay projects out there. So that's where the kind of the, the niche is.
Thank you.
But I guess, I, I think some of the questions that I've heard is, did that go through the C tab process and the community engagement process since it's C tab money it sounds like?
That one did not in terms of the C tab being built around that, that residential piece of it.
I think that was the, because the, the feedback I heard, not that there were any bad projects, because as you say, they, they all need to be done, but at least in District Three, it didn't sound like from the council members that they thought those were the most important projects to do. And so we're just trying to figure out how we build in that back and forth, either with the council members or the C tab on, you know, prioritizing very scarce dollars. And it just, it kind of seemed to come out of, from our perspective, I know this wasn't true, but it kind of came out of nowhere, it was suddenly on our radar screen and it wasn't too much before, is how it felt to some of us. I know that a couple of council members were in the loop on it, but.
Council president, certainly was not the intent and, and moving forward, we certainly are happy to, you know, take future ones through, you know, any kind of process. It was just, you know, not necessarily, you know, it's not a constant funding stream, right? In terms of this one kind of opportunity, but if council is open to using some of the TBD money in, 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 in that way too, certainly. It's just obviously there's a lot of work still left in the neighborhoods and all those kind of things. I know you guys have a lot to balance there.
Any other questions, comments? All right, not seeing anyone. Thank you Catherine and Kevin.
Great, thank you for your time.
Thank you for your time, yes.
Thank your team as well, appreciate it. Okay, we're right on schedule and the second half of the meeting is ARP update. We circulated, when I say we, the ARP council work group circulated six potential program ideas for commentary and we had one pagers on them this time. And again, just so you know what the process was, we have been gathering for a while any program ideas, whether they're from council members, the administration or the community. And we asked council members several times, give us ones you want to prioritize to consider because we essentially said that council member ideas and mayoral ideas, we'll make sure that we get those out. I think we got those from everyone, from council member Bingo and just mainly because council member Bingo was newer to the process. We did most of this work before the first of the year. And once we get more nominations from council member Bingo, we'll include that in the process. But what we did was we got most council, some council members only had one or two and several of them had six or seven. And so we went through as a group of three council members and prioritized for each basket of council member ideas, which one we thought would be the most appropriate to move forward with at this time. And so that's, and then plus we have one from the mayor too on homelessness. So that's how we came up with those. So we tried to capture, we didn't, we didn't adopt it word for word. We tried to combine from different council members to get the same thing. But those are the six that are in front of you or hopefully were in front of you. And the first one, and these are not in any particular order, but the first one on the table is re, replenishing the projects of citywide significance. So that allows a developer slash builder to get city grant money for work in the public right of way and utilities. And we've had this in the past, it was very popular and it ran out of money. And so it's proposed to put $2 million in it with a criteria that's focused on ARP priorities, especially around affordable housing. So that's the first topic. And then we're asking you today, just kind of taking everyone's temperature, is that generally something that you would like us to work with the administration on working up an RFP process or eligibility process for? So I'll just throw that one out for people. All right. Council member Stratton?
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I mean, the projects of citywide significance is really important and we absolutely need to replenish that through some, some mechanism and ARP is pretty obvious choice. I guess my, my concern though is I thought all of the council proposals were going to come to all of council for us to prioritize and sort through, not just a select few. So that's where I'm really confused on to the process.
Oh, well, so they're all coming, but we only have, we're only doing six or seven at a time. So then, so this is the first round and we picked one from everyone that had submitted. And then in a couple of more weeks, we'll be back with the second round. And so that's, it's, they're not, I forget how many total council things, there's probably 40 or 50. So in terms of doing it.
But essentially, the subcommittee is going to determine the prioritization because whatever comes last is probably not going to get funded. So the subcommittee is making a decision as to what is a priority and what is not without the input of all of council.
Well, I, I don't, I don't really see it that way because we can, everyone knows what's in the basket and can see. And if they see other ones and like, oh, this isn't a priority for me. So this isn't, the assumption isn't that council will approve all of these every time we bring them. It's, it's just an orderly way of bringing them forward for consideration by council. But, but you are correct that, that, and we try to do it, each council, we went, we, we ranked in each council member's basket, we ranked them so that.
But I guess nobody, nobody asked me my thoughts in terms of what I had. But I guess nobody asked me my thoughts in terms of what I had submitted, how I would rank them. So I guess why is the subcommittee deciding for me how I would prioritize these things?
It's, it's not asking you for that. It, it, the subcommittee is ranking them from the list that you gave them, and then now is your opportunity, along with everyone else, to say, yeah, this is a good thing, or this is not a good thing. Or, you know, let's put it in the parking lot and wait to see other ones. So it's, everybody at this meeting is doing that for whatever comes forward. But it's totally fine if you want to give the subcommittee the rankings that you have as your feedback, and say, hey, of the ones that I have, this is my top priority, that's totally...
Well, I guess my top priorities aren't on this list, so, yeah, I mean, I'll have to continue to communicate that.
Yeah. Councilmember, come here.
I'm going to defer to Councilmember Wilkerson first, she had her hand up first.
Thank you. Two things I want to say, on this development incentive, there is a program in place already. Would we mirror that program that's in place, or would, or would there be opportunities to, I would say, improve on it, or expand it maybe for a more affordable, low-income housing, small business, small business incentives? So, that's my first question. Councilmember nodded her head, so, is that a yes? Okay, second of all, well...
But I'll explain, keep going.
Okay, and, and I'll send, I'll finish this to Councilmember Cathcart. There are a number of projects from every council member and from the community, all of them. There is no way possible we can fund all of them. Community members are asking the same thing, you are, where is their project in the pipeline? Nothing has been excluded yet, and this is the first trunk of funding, the first 41 million. The second 41 million will be coming, I think, late April, first of May. So just because projects are not like in the first thirty days does not imply they will not be funded. So I just wanted to assure him of that, and people that are out in the community that are waiting for their projects to come forward.
Can I, can I go now?
I know...
Councilmember, come here, and then Councilmember... Council President. So, Councilmember Wilkerson, Council President did ask to see all of the rules around projects of citywide significance, so that we could look at them and perhaps increase them, tweak them a little bit, and customize them for... Because this, we had this going four years ago, so now we're refunding it, and we need to look at it through a slightly different lens. That's not to say that all projects wouldn't be considered by a developer or a builder, but we would have criteria that we could look at. And the other piece, I would say, is because we're now at the beginning of the construction season, that's why this is time-sensitive, so we want to get it out there so that people can take advantage of it this year and apply for it. Two million, we, in the past, we had 1.5 million, and it just disappeared very quickly. It was wildly popular, it helped a lot of projects get over that price point where they could actually pencil out. So, I see this as something that can spur development, but it also will help our economic piece of economic development for our city. But we certainly can look at the criteria and say, we want to add this, this is this. Sorry, Council President, that is what my understanding was from you.
It is correct. I was just going to add that in order for it to be eligible for ARP expenditure, we also have to customize it. So, the idea is, we would use the same program, but the scoring sheet would probably be adjusted for the ARPA version of it. Councilmember Bingo, and then Councilmember Stratton.
Yeah, piggybacking off of what Councilman Cathcart said, is there a certain location where we can see the forty or the fifty items that have been presented to, to the committee? Because as Cathcart pointed out, is that, you know, six or seven have come to us, but without us being able to see all of them, and this was kind of our pushback and some other funding mechanisms, is it might be a good thing, but we don't know until we have the ability to see all of them, so that we can prioritize them and vote for or against them in this situation.
Yeah, so the short answer is, yes, we definitely, the, what I know is, should be easily accessible, and if we haven't provided you the link before, is the overall list of all the program ideas, which is in the, I don't know, 160 or something like that. But what I was, what I don't know yet, I think we have it, but I have to confirm with McKenzie, that we have a smaller spreadsheet, which would just have the projects that council or the mayor has asked to have special priority. So we'll get that figured out and to you as well. And we are looking for, from you, of the overall list of the ones that you're interested in, too. And there's, there's not a, there's not a limit of how many you can do. You just say, yep, this is one I really want to sponsor, so. But we'll get, the bigger list, your office should already have, but if not, we'll make sure, and then the smaller...
Well, and that bigger list doesn't have a lot of detail, though, correct? It's just kind of, this is an idea.
Yeah, it doesn't, so what you see today, the material that you have today, is on ones that look like are going to be a priority, and let's look at it, we invested the time to put more detail in it. So we're not going to have that for all 160 ideas.
So then that's where the committee is determining for the city council, which ones are the most important, and then giving more detail to them, is that what I'm hearing?
We, we are of the ones that seem most appropriate, based on our judgment, but we don't just, so, we don't decide. You know, you can say, no, that's not important, you're incorrect on that one.
But deciding to present before us here with more detail is based on the committee's judgment, okay.
Yeah, because we only have so many resources, so, yeah. But people, if they want to put their ideas in, can put as much detail in their ideas as they want, so, we're not limiting that. Before we go to you, Councilmember Stratton, Matt Boston had his hand raised, I don't know if it's still relevant, but I think he was trying to answer something.
I, I was just going to kind of reiterate the fact that, yes, I mean, so, so all council members do have access to the overall spreadsheet that is a high-level overview of all submissions that have been, have been put in place so far. That's community members and council members. The intention for the subcommittee is for all of council to hear, all of council member and administration's requests come to council within the study group. There's obviously, what Councilmember Wilkerson said, there's obviously only so much time and so many resources to get into the higher-level details, that we have our person developing the white pages. So, there is a priority ranking just, just there. So if you're looking to say, okay, is this something that I want to tackle down the road? Or is, is my item something that's on this list that I want to tackle down the road? So that therefore, what is being presented is not a priority for me at that time? That is kind of the intention of having access to the overall list for the entirety of the council.
I guess my pushback on that is just that, you know, since District One isn't represented on that, on that committee, having the committee determine which ones are a priority for the city does leave District One unrepresented as it has historically been when it comes to funding situations.
So, we can only have three people on it, I'm elected district-wide, I've lived in District One, and so I try to be that voice. But, again, you are free, and Councilmember Cathcart is free to say, hey, of the ones that we're prioritizing, that we want you to consider, this is our top priority, or top seven, or however you want to rank them, and we'll take that into account, so, we're not, to give us that information, we'll take that into account as well. Councilmember, no, first, I have Councilmember Stratton, and then Councilmember...
I just want to make sure I understand this, because Councilmember Cath, what I understood is that the list that we're looking at right now involves, or should involve, or constitutes what all of us have brought forward. So there's, is there a little bit in these for all of us that we've said we supported? Because what he said was that there was nothing on his priority list that was on here. And so I just want to make sure, how is, is that not correct, or how is that? I'm not sure.
We, he had a proposal on refunding permit fees, but what I heard him to say was that that might not have been his top one. Like, if we were going to do one of his, he had possibly another one that he wished we would do first from his list.
Okay.
I think, yeah.
Is there an easy way, as we look at these, that we can highlight? I don't know, I need to think about how, because as I look at these, there are, most of these I support, I see the need. I don't know if I sent those in, or if I had people forward applications to the committee or not, but how, how are we going to know that every council member has that, is getting that opportunity to have those priorities?
We...
Included.
Yeah, so I can, I can just tell you that when, the reason this list came was from each council, we didn't, again, we didn't have Councilmember Bingo's choices yet, but other than that, we made sure that we had at least one. Now, some of them are combined, so they might have been on two.
Okay, so, right.
But, next time we submit this, we will put the names of the council member by, that's what you're asking for.
Well, it confuses me, because the, when we go down to the youth services.
Yeah.
The minute I saw that, I thought of one of the projects that, I have a community organization that's putting forth a application for something similar. So, is that going to be included, or can be, okay.
So that's where it came, but also Councilmembers Oppone had one from that, too. So it came from both of, and there were multiple ones for youth services. So that's part of the thing, that we, when we did this, rather, this wasn't like, okay, we're going to give money to Daybreak. This was, we're doing youth services.
As a, okay.
And so, we would do an RFP, and then all those, I think there's three or four people who have put in ideas for youth services. They could all apply for the RFP. So our, what we were trying to do is make it more efficient and effective, and say, okay, let's combine those together. But it, those came from both yours and Councilmembers Oppone's list.
Okay, so that, that, so, as I look through these, then, I'm okay looking at knowing that these are probably a combination of, okay, and that as it moves through the process to an RFP, then those, those select dealing with youth services would go there, and that's where, okay, okay, I'm sorry, my brain was a little...
It's, no, it's, it's very helpful to ask those questions, because we don't, we don't know how clear or unclear we're being, so it helps us to clarify that. I think Councilmember Oppone was next, and then Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that Councilmember Bingo, you had a chance to submit projects, and I came and asked you about that, and it's been 27 days and we still haven't had it. So if you're saying that District One doesn't have representation, you've had an opportunity to come look at it, and would love to still see it, so, just wanted to put that out there and clarify that.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah, well, I have submitted a long list of requests, so, and I'm not getting anywhere with those requests. So, anyway, District One does deserve representation. So my, my, my question is, well, I guess, let me first say, I don't have any major concerns, looking at the list of what's proposed for today. I don't have any major concerns with what's on there. I guess my frustration is just that there really has not been a lot of communication since I submitted my list with regards to priorities, or what would you like to see advanced. And I've been kind of beating the drum, and really being a broken record on funding the Northeast Community Center, the new Hilliard Library up there, or the old Hilliard Library with new behavioral health investments, and supporting the NEPDA, which, very under-resourced Public Development Authority that needs help to be stood up, so that we can grow jobs, get housing, all that good stuff. So, those are the two things that are my top priorities, not to say that other things aren't also very important, that I've put on my list, or that others have, and certainly, things on this list today are important. My frustration is simply that there's not been an opportunity for me to make sure that the, the top priorities of mine are being considered and will be brought forward. And, and I don't know if there's some, something I can do to help get those to the forefront, to make sure that we're considering those, or something that I have not done to get those to the forefront. But whatever it might be, I'm happy to, to do it, I'll go knock on anybody's door, you know, I, whatever it takes. So I just want fair consideration for these, you know, big visionary projects in Northeast Spokane.
I saw Matt Boston raise his hand first, and then Councilmember Wilkerson.
Yeah, I was just going to say, I mean, maybe, and maybe that's, maybe that's just a, another step that we put in this process of just saying, you know, before, before the work group is considering the next round, the next tranche, I sent out an email to individual council members of, hey, can you prioritize? Can you put a ranking of the projects that you have left? Because obviously, there's going to be, and I've told administration this as well, there's going to be projects that are going to come in, and, you know, you don't want to invariably say that, okay, this is at the bottom of the list, because this is the last project that I brought in. Sometimes you're going to want to say, hey, this has moved to the top of the list because of a need that's arisen. So, maybe what I'll do, I mean, I can talk to the work group offline about it, but just send out an email to individual council members, or have McKenzie send out an email to individual council members to say, send us your prioritization, your, your ranking of what your projects are that are out there right now. This is what we have, let us know what your number one is at the moment, if that would help.
That sounds like a good idea. Councilmember Wilkerson.
I, I just want to say again, this has been challenging to give away $81 million, but for council members, we are not only advocating just for our district, we are advocating for the whole city. We had lots of input and thought exchanges from community members whose issues and concerns and projects are just as important as our own ones, because I've got some, too. But the community needs to feel that their ideas are just as important as each individual council member. So I want you to know, that is what's being taken into consideration also, as we move forward with this process, not just your ideas, but what's the community ideas. And your ideas may come to the whole council, and they say, you know, that's important, but it's not important enough for us to fund at this time, and I'll say that to every council member. It may be important, but it doesn't rise to the level that it passes the vote of the whole council for the next step in the process. So I don't want the community to feel that council members here are cherry-picking their projects and not considering the community's projects with just as much criteria and value as council members.
Councilmember, come here.
Ditto, Councilmember Wilkerson, and some of these, many of these projects that are being submitted by a council member from a certain district will benefit all of our districts, will benefit everybody. I recoil when we start pitting neighborhoods against each other. It's not productive, it doesn't serve our entire community, and that's not the intention here. The intention is, as Councilmember Wilkerson said, that everything is on the table to be considered, and not, we're not cherry-picking here. Most of what we have on our list is going to benefit the entire community, so, said my piece.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah, I'll just finish this by saying, I, I agree, we have to take into account everything, think about the whole city, that's really, really important. But I was elected to be a champion for Northeast Spokane, and I'm going to do that every single chance I get. And of course, we got to think about contextually the whole city, but I'm here to represent the people in Northeast, and that's what I'm going to do.
And you can do that without pitting neighborhood against neighborhood.
I, I will just say two things, Councilmember Cathcart, just from my position on the work group. One, we are, have been thinking about money for refurbishing the newly vacant libraries or supporting community centers. vacant libraries, or supporting community centers. Um, so I think you'll be seeing that come pretty soon. Um, on the PDAs, I'll just tell you, I think the idea right now in, um, in the basket is not very defined. So that would help me to get a little more meat on the bones of what you're looking for, for that. Because when I was looking through your list of things and prioritizing, I looked at the attainable housing thing jumped out at me, but part of it, in, in reflecting on what you've been saying, is I'm just not really clear what the PDA piece is. So I didn't have a vivid picture in my mind, so.
Yeah, I, I think David had submitted, uh, some real detailed stuff, and I was sort of supporting what he had submitted, but I'll have to go back and find that, and I'll get it here.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know that we have that. So, let's, let's close that loop on that. All right. Uh, council member Zepone.
Yeah, I just want to add too, um, so everybody knows, that I did, uh, come up to ca, council member Kepka and ask more questions about the PDA too, because I didn't know very much. So we, on the council, or on the committee, are taking steps to try to incorporate everybody's priorities. Um, I just wanted to let everybody know that was happening.
Well, super good feedback, again. Communication takes everyone involved, and, um, it's really good feedback to get from, from people. But we are, again, trying to do a very challenging task of considering dozens and dozens of really great ideas, and, um, getting them considered and heard, and in a way that's eligible for ARPA. So, we're, we're continuing on that. Let me pivot slightly to the specifics, because we got into a really good conversation of the overall. Sounds like we've had some discussion about the, um, projects of citywide significance. The next step was refunding, uh, permit fees for, the, the way we wrote it for this was refunding permit fees for first-time homeowners with less than 200% AMI. Um, that would mean that they would know they were getting several thousand from the city, that that could assist them in the down payment, or assist them in the price, and would expand hopefully the group of customers who could buy homes from builders willing to build in that price range, and then make it more profitable for builders, because they can have more demand for their products. So.
Council member Kinnear.
Uh, that sounds like a good idea. Is there a mechanism to enforce that if a builder accepts those conditions, that they will actually pass on that savings to the homeowner?
Well, it doesn't, it gets paid directly to the homeowner, so that's the condition.
Okay, okay, good.
So that's how you know, it makes it easier.
Council president.
Yeah, council member Kepka.
So I guess my question is, why not simply just use this to, um, eliminate the fees on our end, rather than a payback later on?
Um, my thinking about it is, the builder will sell it for what the market will pay. And so if you have, let's say it's $5,000, um, that won't, they'll, they won't sell it for $5,000 cheaper, they'll sell it for whatever the market does. So this, so giving it to the owner who meets that income qualification, um, would actually get that person into housing. So that's, that was the thinking on that.
Okay, and then, and then in terms of first-time homebuyer, is there, is there a reason for that? I, I guess I'm thinking about, you know, just the overall situation that we're in, and it, it seems like if we're just getting housing built that's up to that attainable price point, then regardless of first time or not, I, I would feel like we're still moving the needle. So I'm just curious on why the decision on the first time.
It, it's, it's not a, I wouldn't say it's a mandatory thing, it was just a way to try to focus a limited amount of money. So, um, it could, it could also be, um, a, like a preference for first-time homebuyers, or something like, I mean, it could, it could be however. So those kind of details would get worked out in the RFP development process, but that's what we're looking for exactly what you just gave us, is that kind of feedback. So, so that would get incorporated into that.
Council member Kinnear.
And one final question, is there going to be any kind of residency requirement? In other words, would you have to have lived in the city for a year before you can apply? Or can you come from Seattle or Portland or who knows where, and apply for this?
I don't, I don't think it's legal to do a residency requirement, is my sense, but we can find out from city legal. I don't, I think generally, there's some Supreme Court cases out there that you can't premise benefits based on how long people have lived in your city.
I, I would be concerned that the citizens who are here would get, wouldn't get preference.
Yeah. I'm pretty sure we're not allowed to do that, but we'll, we'll ask.
Council member Wilkerson.
Thank you. And so council member Kinnear, truly, those are the details that will be worked out in the RFP. What we are doing today is saying, we would like to allocate this amount of money for youth services, this amount of money for development, development incentives, this amount for this, so we can see how the money's being spent. But, of course, the devil be in the details, but again, that will come up in the RFP, and those are the questions we can include in the RFP process, uh, to make sure it's as narrow, uh, benefit our community as best we can.
So quick question, council member Wilkerson, is, um, that was my other question, with the, the next step, the RFPs, who's, is the committee going to be involved in writing those, or is there going to be staff, or is it going to be a mixture, I mean, to get to those details?
So, it will be a mixture. Uh, there will be a team from the administration, and there will be a representative from the ARPA team doing it together with some community members. So we're trying to be as holistic as we can. And those will be community members of some experience or expertise that could bring to the table.
Perfect, thanks.
And it, from council, it might include like our initiative managers too, in that area. So. Um, okay. Next one chronologically is, uh, youth behavioral health programs, and after-school events, at-risk youth. Um, and again, there are several different proposals out there. This is trying to encompass a large amount of them without getting too specific. Council member Kepka.
Yeah, it wasn't clear to me if this included the, the one that I'm sponsoring regarding youth sports, is the idea that this would be wrapped up in this line item as well?
Yes, it would.
So, so I guess my question is, if, if we're including behavioral health, sports, other interventions, I, I, I mean, I, I don't think we need to necessarily allocate more, but are we thinking a million is enough, or are we going to have to come back and do another round of this later on?
Well, that's, uh, exactly the feedback. Again, the, I think it'd be totally fine to say, yep, maybe we should make that 2 million. I, I, but that's the feedback we're looking for today, is, is that. But it wasn't, just to be clear, it was not a specific project proposal of 1 million. It was like, oh, there's several of these projects like that, here's a million. Um, but it could be 2 million, if you.
And, and I don't, I don't have a number, I'm really just sort of asking the question, because I, I don't know. And I, I, I definitely want to make sure that when the RFP gets drafted, that we're, you know, keeping this as broad as possible for different sport options, and not just simply like an SYSA, but, but it could be inclusive of a lot of other things too, so.
Yep. That's, and that is the intent. And that's where the RFP will drill down with some criteria, so.
Just to add to that, council member Kepka, one of the groups in the community that presented an application that I've been working with, it is, it's not so much behavioral health, but it's more of a, um, youth community center, or a youth center. It would be great, because maybe there could be some connections with sports, um, in something like that. So I don't know if that really fits under behavioral health, but I know it was a project that, that, um, up in the Northwest Shadle area, that was a priority.
It was, so this topic was intended to include that, yes?
Council member Wilkerson.
I'll, I'll just say, under this topic, we may be overwhelmed with the RFPs and realize, we sold this short. We have to, the need in our community is greater, but we have to start somewhere. So I just want to keep that out there, it's not set in stone. This may be the one that has the most money to fund. So, um, going forward, I just want to know that we're trying to be as flexible and as inclusive as we possibly can, based on the ARPA parameters that we have to work with, uh, with these.
Council member Zepone.
Yeah, I was thinking about this one this week, since our committee meeting, so, late. But, um, I, I definitely share similar feelings, that might not be enough, um, just because there are a lot of capital projects that people are requesting, and I would love to make sure that we can cover those too.
All right, well, I guess the question, you know, we're, we're not taking votes at a study session, but we could bump it to 2 million. Um, people generally nodding in favor of that, and that's, uh, just do that. But, again, we come up with stuff in our work group, and we put it in, but this is the feedback that we're looking for from the whole group, so. Okay, um, next was street medicine, there are two different proposals on this. Um, this is to have, uh, medical personnel and vans, um, uh, providing medicine to people on the street. And there's, it was interesting, one organization has the vans and needs money for staff, and the other organization has some staff and needs some money for vans. And this would be over a three-year period, for $1.2 million, so, $400,000 a year, um, out there.
Council member Kepka.
So is it a specific organization that this is proposing to fund, or is it still going to be an RFP, and they would apply, and?
It would, it would still be an RFP. The, there were two different organizations that put in proposals, and they weren't coordinated when they put them in, they just put them in separately. So, I already encourage them to talk to each other.
And I, I guess for me, I, I might have questions, I mean, I guess if it's just, we're going to do the RFP, then I can get the questions answered later, but I would have questions maybe around the model, and, and how they work, and those sorts of things. But, um, but for now, I guess I, I can reserve those for later.
Okay. Um, next was, uh, again, request from multiple people, but also the administration, which was money for homeless services. The way it was listed was for capital expense and operations. We did have a meeting with the administration yesterday, and there's maybe some questions about whether or not we can use it for capital, for new capital, uh, but we haven't answered that question. So, but we wrote it pretty broadly. Um, and, um, this came out of the mayor's request around budget season to have more. And, and again, you could spend almost unlimited money on homeless services these days, so this is just a $3 million piece.
Council member Kepka.
Yeah, so I guess my question is, so 3 million, I assume that's going to cover the capital costs of a shelter, but it also includes operational, and obviously, there will be ongoing, assuming the shelter remains, there'll be ongoing operational costs beyond. So, will there be a plan in place as to how we would cover those? I know some, we've seen some pretty hefty numbers from the Guardians, from Catholic Charities, others, so is there a plan in place to make sure that there's funding post-2024, if we're going to stand this up with the RP dollars?
Yeah, so we, I mean, that's a great question, and we left it broad for this particular item, uh, could include either. We did put money in our 2022 budget, extra money for the operation of a new homeless shelter, so, but we didn't put capital money in. So this was kind of to marry up with that. Right. And then, getting close to the end of our time, but thanks for your patience. The other one was cultural events. So this was an idea for 2022, '23, '24, to spend money, um, on helping events get back on their feet post-pandemic. So again, it would be an RFP, it'd be a little bit like our LTAC process that we have, uh, that currently council member Wilkerson supervises. But that's focused almost exclusively on, uh, hotel nights. This is broader than that, so this would be other events as well, could include the same kinds of events. But it's like the St. Patrick's Day Parade, the Lilac Parade, um, the Pow Wow, um, other, other things like it. And the way it's written would be for marketing, um, expenses, and then public safety. So right now, one of the challenges those parades and events had was that the city is charging them, um, more money for police and fire, and so this could be used to offset, even though we're not charging them 100%. It's still, uh, a transition for them. So it would help them get back on their feet, and not have to absorb the police and fire costs that they have to currently endure. So, that was the intent. So think, think LTAC, but broader, broader eligibility.
Council member Kepa.
Thank you for this one. I sit on Spokane Arts, I've hea, heard it for two years, some of these artists, and these programs, and these events, that bring so many people, um, downtown and into the neighborhoods, they're really, really suffering, and, um, I really appreciate this one. Thanks.
All right. Okay, any more commentary? Council member Kepka.
Yeah, just wondering, when do we expect the first RFPs will be put together and brought forward? Like, what's that going to look like?
Yeah, that's been, um, challenging. We're, we're going to hear from the administration at their meeting on Tuesday, to tell us who their, um, RFP people are going to be, so that we can get those written. We've, we've been, I would say, from the council side, really pushing to do it sooner, and, but it takes, we all have to do it together to do it. So, uh, I imagine it's going to be a few weeks. My, just my personal top priority is we've got those ho, affordable housing dollars, we've got projects that are ready to be built. It seems like we could just use the CHHS RFP process and just get that money out the door, since it's going to take 12 to 18 months to build those. Um, but we, I'll just tell you, the, to a person, the council work group is pushing to get it sooner. But I, I wish I could tell you how soon, but it's, it's still going to be a while.
So one, one thought I had is, um, and I'm sure I have a lot of individual thoughts for the various RFPs, but just for all of them, I think it'd be great if we could put some requirements in there, that we, you know, have some data collection around demographics, who's being served, um, and, and in terms of like geographic equity, where. So, if, say we're funding the arts, you know, have some data on where those artists live, or where the organizations are located, or where their art is performed or demonstrated. I, I just think some specifics on, on data collection is going to be really helpful, so that when it's all said and done, we can have some, some way of measuring, you know, where and how this money was, was allocated.
Yeah, I 100% agree, and I think the county did a really good job of that with the CARES Act money. And I've spoken to the mayor, and we both agree that we want to be able to document that as well. So, that's well said. All right. Okay, so that brings us to the end of study session. We, uh, remember on Monday, we're, um, no legislative session, uh, at 6:00, we're going to move it to 3:30, and we're going to do our proclamation. We are going to do open forum, uh, at 3:30, um, as well. We also have an executive session, uh, but we're going to do the open forum before the executive session on Monday. So, that, everyone, have a great, uh, weekend, take care of yourself, and if you can, take care of someone else. Be well. Thanks for the conversation.